We're going to see.
Oh.
The time is so on, we are going to call this meeting to order. We're beginning with the Committee of the Whole this evening. Alderman Moyer?
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Seventh Ward Alderman Mike Waldron, Alderman at Large Sonia Bird, at the Committee of the Whole and City Council meetings of May 19th, 2020. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Williams. You don't hear me. There's never any discussion on this one, is there? Oh, I'm asking it. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Moyer. The next item are Mayor's Board appointments. I would like to recommend the reappointment of Jeff Nelson to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a full three-year term to expire on May 31st, 2023.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second, Parker.
I have a motion from Alderman Schoonmaker and a second from Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? We have no agenda items this evening, so we're going to move right into the information. And I would like to begin this evening with an introduction of Martin Vonix. And I want to confirm that when I give people the correct pronunciation, it rhymes with phonics. Is that right, Martin? I think you're on mute. Do you need to unmute him?
Where did he go? He was on here.
He's...
How about now?
There you go. We can hear you now. Thank you.
Yes, you pronounced it correctly. Thank you.
Phonics, okay. So now everybody in the community understands. It's phonics. So anyway, we're just so pleased to have you be a part of our team. Just to give a little background, you have over 30 years of experience in the industry. You are a trained city administration person. What's the degree that you have?
I have a master's in public administration.
Thank you. And has a wonderful experience in economic development, which I think really serves our community well at this time of the I-74 footprint redevelopment. And so I just wanted to introduce, and would you prefer to be called Martin or Marty?
Marty, yes, Marty.
So I wanted to turn it over to Marty, just so he can tell us a little bit about himself and what his plans are when he first arrives here next week.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, the city team and residents. I am truly excited to be part of the City of Molinee team, and I'm delighted to be here with you tonight, even though it's from a long distance away. I think it was really interesting that a news item announcing my appointment said that I was a New Yorker. And I think, I'm not going to ask for a correction, because I'm not a New Yorker. I'm a Midwesterner and native Illinoisan. So I'm happy to say I'm coming back home to my home state and to a region I'm very familiar with. You know, my goals are really ultimately to serve you, the mayor and city council, well. But more importantly, it's my intent to serve the community of Molinee and its residents in a way that makes them feel safe, comfortable, and happy. And so as I embark on this new adventure, as I come to the community next week, I'm eager to meet the staff, get engaged with them, in dealing with the many challenges that we face in the next several months and over the next year. I know there's a lot of things that we have to do with the budget. This pandemic is something new that no one has ever dealt with. I see so many great economic development opportunities in Molinee, and so I'm really excited. So I'm going to keep this short. Once again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to City Council. I look forward to seeing all of you in the next coming weeks.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any questions for Marty this evening? Just a big welcome from all of us, Marty, from both the council and the staff team. We're just thrilled to have you be a part of it and looking forward to getting to know you better. We did issue a press release today, and I don't think that we sent that to the council, though, did we?
Oh.
It's all right.
Sorry about that.
Well, we'll send you the press release so that you've got the information. If not this evening, tomorrow, so everybody's got it. So moving on to the next slide. Oh, and Marty will be in town next Wednesday. It's his first day. So he'll be engaging either through video or in person, depending on how we're doing health-wise. So the next item is from Jonathan Fox, who I believe is remoted in, to give us an update on 2312 Fifth Avenue. Or is it Brad that's going to present?
Next to him now.
Amy Saunders is on there as well. What?
I'm unmuted, those people.
Hi, Amy. Is John unmuted?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm John.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Hi.
So, John, are you the one that wants to give us the update, or would you prefer? Oh, there we go.
Sure. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, and we can see a slide.
Okay, super. Well, thank you for the opportunity this evening, and wanted to, been working with Amy and Brad with regard to issues that have arisen at 2312 Fifth Avenue, which is a property or building that most of you or all of you are familiar with. We were, in February of this year, we were attempting, or I was attempting, to get a deal put together with the owner of the property, which is Vanch LLC. And there was a memo circulated that provides a little bit of background information, but Vanch LLC is an Illinois Limited Liability Company, and it's based out of Galesburg. And their manager is a gentleman by the name of Colindra Cower out of Davenport. Mr. Cower is represented by a local law firm, the Pepping Firm and Silvis. And I had a few very short conversations with his attorney, but we were unable to get to any resolution, specifically a deed in lieu of foreclosure that would provide for a quitclaim or a deed to this property, premise mostly upon the fact that the city has a recorded judgment against this property for code violations that exceeds $48,000. We were not able to get a deal or a resolution put together outside of court in February, and in March, we started to put together the necessary documents to file to file a foreclosure. And as all of you probably know, in mid-March, the court system, by and large, has stopped processing or at least hearing things. And in working with Brad and Amy on this property and our options, the idea came up during one of our conversations that we should consider or contemplate in lieu of foreclosing on this property, which by our estimation would result in the city getting a, obtaining a deed to the property in approximately six months. That it may be more beneficial to the city to, instead of pursuing that deed directly, putting out an RFP that would assign our lien rights. So again, what we're talking about now is a lien that's worth, a judgment lien that's worth at or about, let's use round numbers, $50,000. Put that out for an RFP so that we could see if any developer, commercial property owner, contractor, somebody with the knowledge and expertise and experience to really do something with this building would be interested in taking our lien rights and doing two things. One, foreclosing on the property through our lien, and two, curing the code violations and hopefully rehabbing that property. So the idea here is not completely different than what was contemplated originally through the foreclosure, but instead, putting it out for an RFP, and the winning bidder here would be obligated to timely pursue the foreclosure, and then, once they obtained that deed, rectify the code violations, and again, hopefully improve this property, make it a cornerstone of that block or neighborhood. So we put together a quick PowerPoint presentation. And again, Amy and Brad have been great here. And what's being proposed on the second slide, again, tells you that we have lien rights, and those lien rights can be foreclosed. What we're anticipating here is, or what we're suggesting, is that the minimum bid, and I know this sounds like an oddball number, would be $601.50. And that is the amount of a small weed abatement lien that the city has. The other obligations a successful bidder here would have would be not only to, again, timely move forward with the foreclosure rights, timely address the code violations, the city would maintain authority and control over the situation in that we would have the ability to participate in any settlement discussions that may arise after that lawsuit is filed by the successful bidder. And furthermore, the city would obtain reverter rights in the subject property should the successful bidder fail for whatever reason, either in the foreclosure or in remedying the code violation. So it's a little bit of a unique situation, but again, I guess the most simple way for me to put it to you is what we're proposing or suggesting is slightly different in that we would put out for an RFP to someone who would have to go through the foreclosure system on their own doing, and quite frankly, on their own nickel. Now, the next slide, we list some of the advantages here. And I think the first one is the most important. And what we're saying here is, doing it this way, we think we're going to be able to gather information very quickly as to what level of interest there is in the subject property. And I don't want to mislead or be overly optimistic. We may put this RFP out, and based on any number of factors, may not receive any or at least any satisfactory bid. But we think getting that information now, as opposed to after we've obtained a share of deed through our own foreclosure action, may be beneficial. Let's gather the information now through this process. The other main advantage here is, it would allow, again, whether it's the developer, a commercial property owner, someone with that expertise, someone with that knowledge, and an entity that's been involved in projects like this before, to get involved now. And the city at that point would not be taking deed or title to this property, but we'd get the experts in more quickly and more timely. Other advantages include, again, that there'd be a minimization or reduction in expenses. And again, the city would retain a financial interest and be a participant should there be any settlements. And again, there would be a reverter to the city should the bidder fail, again, either in the foreclosure action or in the code, or in the property rehab or rectifying the code violation. The next slide is admittedly an estimated timeline that Brad and Amy and I have put together, but we think this could move forward relatively quickly with a few variables and unknowns. Specifically, we suggest that this would be published if agreed upon on May 27. We'd extend out the typical RFP deadline, which I understand typically 10 days. We'd extend it out to June 17. And the reason we go a little longer is, we think the bidders would want the opportunity to both involve their council and to look at the building to figure out and to see what's needed. Those bids would then be due on the 17th of June, opened on the 17th of June, and then Amy and Brad and I would be committed to bringing our proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed RFP responses to council for review and/or approval on June 23. We would then suggest that we'd have meetings and have the agreement for the assignment of the lien signed prior, on or prior to July 3. That agreement for assignment would be brought back to council again for approval by July 14. Then on the last timeline or sheet or PowerPoint slide here, we would want the award of the RFP to the firmer individual, that letter to go out by July 24. And then we would give that for the successful bidder 30 days from there to get the foreclosure on file. And then our estimate is that that foreclosure action could be completed on or prior to March 1. And that's where we really have some wiggle room and some uncertainty. These foreclosure actions can take various amounts of time depending on a number of factors, one of which is what level of court services and what level of operation is the Rock Island County Circuit Court going to have over the coming months. But one factor we do have in our favor is, we're prepared through the efforts that we've put together to provide the successful bidder with an affidavit that says that this is an abandoned property and satisfies the code requirements to shorten the foreclosure redemption period. So I guess what I'm telling you is, this March 1 timeline or estimate is subject to some variables, but I think it's realistic. And that would entitle us then on March 1, in spring of 2021, that that bidder, having gone through the foreclosure process, the idea here is, that entity or individual would be motivated to pull the permit and get the, within 60 days, and to get the work completed. So, again, there's some advantages to this. There's some benefits to the city, but I really think the most important, too, are the ability to gather information, to see who's interested in that property now, as opposed to after we take deed or title to the property, and two, to get an expert, someone with the ability, the knowledge, and the wherewithal, involved with that property sooner rather than later. And that's the basis for what we've come up here, come up with here. I know it's a little different, but I think there's some real advantages here. And quite frankly, other than the wait time between now and when the bids would be due, I don't know that there's really any downside for the city. So with that said, I'd open up, I don't know if Brad or Amy, if you have anything at all to add.
No, I think you've done a good job of explaining that, John. Thank you.
So in case you didn't hear that, for the people remote, Brad doesn't have anything to add, but he complimented John and his performance. Amy, do you have anything you want to share with us?
No, I don't have anything to add at this time either, unless there are questions.
Thank you. Are you looking for a motion from us? Oh, no, this is just information. Okay, Alderman Potter, did you have a comment?
I do. In this information gathering timeline, are we, you talk about rectifying the code. Would demolition, I'm assuming, is not being anticipated, or would that be one of the remedies that might be available? And the reason I ask that is that I had heard before that there was interest in this property, and one of the interests was to demolish the building and put in surface park, and I'm not sure that's exactly what the council goals are.
Alderman Potter, this is Jonathan Fox. The plan that we have is open for bids that would include any range of uses for the property, and those bids would be subject to the city's selection of the bid it prefers. So at this point, the idea was, we'd offer any and all bids for any and all uses or plans, but with the understanding that it's the preferred outcome here, that the property would be rehabbed and put into use again. But we didn't, we don't, what we're proposing here is, it would be open to any potential use whatsoever. It's not limited whatsoever, I should say.
Alderman Went?
Mayor, if I could have a quick follow-up?
Yes.
I'd just like to remind the council that this was actually areas part of the LeCote Study, and one of the ideas was that this would, area would have a, an urban feel similar to what we're talking about in the I-70, closer on the west side of the I-74 corridor. And I think that, you know, that's something that we want to strive for. We want something similar in use like this, rather than some surface parking or something else. So if we're going to head down this path, we want to make sure that that's the preferred outcome. Thank you.
Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great proposal. I think it's a good way to look at this. I agree with Alderman Potter that, you know, surface parking is probably the last thing that we want to happen here. But by getting all of the options out, we'll kind of understand, and maybe the property can't be saved, but maybe one of the proposals is, somebody wants to come in and put a two or three-story, you know, office on the first floor, or retail, or a restaurant on the first and residential above, I think we'll have a better feeling for what those options are. The only concerns, I guess I have, is the timeframe. I know that it was mentioned that we'd have, I guess, 20 days. My only concern is that that may not be enough time if somebody was going to analyze the building, kind of put their numbers together, and figure out what their proposal is going to be. Although, maybe we're just looking for general idea, and then it comes back to the council, and then we try to sharpen the pencil before we award the RFP to someone. Because I do like the idea that, you know, they're giving us a proposal. We say, yes, but you have to do all of these things, and if they don't, then it reverts back to us. But if they do, then we may wind up with exactly what we want down in that corner. So I support this. Just want to make sure that we've got enough timeframe so that the RFPs are useful to us, or we manage the expectations of what we're looking for in that timeframe.
And Alderman Went, this is John Fox here. Quick question. I want to make sure I understand the 20-day period that concerns you, whether it's enough time. Which period are you talking about? I apologize.
Well, I think that it was something, like, the RFPs would go out and that they needed to be back. I think it's the slide before this is the 17th, or May 27th and to June 17. So that 2021 days or whatever that timeframe is. I just know that we historically, when Ray Forsyte was running things for some RFPs, one of the things he said was, well, sometimes that the RFP timeframe was too short, it would eliminate some people because they're trying to get their numbers together, and, you know, if we're asking too much. So I guess, the biggest issue, if it's just 20 days and we're just asking for a general RFP that we're not getting down to nitty-gritty numbers, you know, I think that that can easily be done in that 20-day timeframe. If we're looking for, hey, this is pencil-sharpened, and this is exactly what we're going to be doing with a budget and all of those things, that may be difficult for some developers to put together in that short a timeframe. Again, that's just from some of the comments that Ray Forsyte had given in the past. It may be something where maybe we talk with Sally Heffernan or Marty as he comes on board on what that timeframe might be. And so I'm open to, if the suggestions are that we can do it in that 20 days, terrific. But I also want to give you guys enough flexibility that if the economic development folk come back and say, hey, we need at least six weeks for these people to come back with something we want to look at, that timeframe is able to be adjusted.
And Alderman Went, thank you. And again, this is John Fox. I would tell you that we struggled, well, not struggled, but we initially only had a 10-day period in there. And as of early this morning, we kicked that submission deadline back to provide for roughly that 20-day period for exactly the same reasons you're referencing. So I guess my thought is, I would rather see us extend, provide for more time if the council thinks it's appropriate. Because I think it is going to be important here that the proposals, or I'm sorry, the bids that we receive, although they may not be with a exactly sharpened pencil and down to the exact date or dollar, I do think we need some level of detail here so that the council can make a decision as to which proposal it wants to accept. And I also don't want that period to be so short that we scare potential parties off. So I don't have a concern if we wanted to, or if the council wanted to extend that to be longer than from May 27 to June 17. It would mean these other dates that follow in the estimated timeline would also have corresponding extensions. And on the slide that's before you now, I believe, I would point out that we're proposing a June 17 response deadline, and then that we would get back with our proposed, with the proposed responses by June 23. And extending that June 17 date, which again, may make all the sense in the world, would also continue that next date out, I think, at least a couple weeks, because I don't believe there's a meeting, if I remember what Amy told me, on June 30. So we'd probably be out a couple weeks there. But again, there's valid reasons for extending a couple of these deadlines. I think there are very valid reasons for doing that.
Well, with that said, I guess I would move that we accept this proposal with the one caveat, that you guys talk with Marty and Sally, and lean on them to whatever that timeframe makes most sense, and we give you guys the flexibility to stretch it out, shrink it, whatever you think is most appropriate, and move forward with this proposal.
Is there a second to that?
Great. I'll second it.
Second, this is Parker.
Sorry, Alderman Parker. Alderman Moyer got in ahead of you. So we have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Do we have something there? Sorry, Alderman Bird?
No, I was just getting ready to say aye.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you to the entire team of working on this.
Thank you.
I think it's going to turn out
Thank you.
eventually. Okay, the next one is, KJ is going to present to us the CDBG COVID-19 Proposed Activities. Don brought up, is that the slide that you wanted, KJ? She's muted, too. Yeah, just one second, KJ. There you go. We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good. All right. Well, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. As you know, two meetings ago, we talked about proposed activities for the COVID CDBG dollars from round one. Since then, we learned that they have done the allocations for round two. Unfortunately, we did not receive any money for round two. Most of the people in Illinois that received it are up in the Chicago area. So like, Davenport didn't get any, and Rock Island didn't get any either. But there is a round three. But unfortunately, that money doesn't have to be obligated until 2022. So we have some time to anticipate, hopefully getting some additional funding. But with that being said, I listened to the suggestions that council made to me at the last meeting. Since then, I've talked to the Moline House and Authority, I've talked to Project Now, I talked to one of the townships, and I've talked to the Salvation Army. And so I'm coming back to you guys with some additional proposals. So how we propose to address COVID-19, doing it with shelter assistance, food assistance, technology support, business retention, education, and money to run the programs administration. Don, can I have the next slide? Thank you. And just to remind you of the allocation amount, we got $478,057. Still a couple questions that we don't know. Still a couple of questions that we don't know. If the COVID dollars are going to interfere or be counted towards the timeliness test that we take at the end of October, where we can only have one and a half of our allocation between our current allocation and the COVID allocation. So the timeliness to kind of spend the funds, they have not answered that question yet for us. And then we don't know if any money is received back, whether it's going to be counted as program income. And then if it is counted as program income, whether we have to use it on other COVID-19-related projects. So those things are still unknown, but we are still trying to get answers to those. Don, can I have the third slide, please? Okay. So again, shelter, we're still proposing to use money for emergency rent and utility assistance and add the amount of $200,000. Probably in the last three and a half weeks, I've had 70 calls, 70 calls for rental assistance and utility assistance. We've sent out applications and I'm trying to process those applications with the current money that we have in our fund. And then rest on to hopefully Salvation Army who will run this program for us. They probably have ran maybe five or six rental programs for us through the years and the last 10 years. And we're hoping to continue on and have them run this one with $200,000. Food, Alderman Parker, you pointed out, hey, can you guys give some money maybe to a shelter? And we looked at that possibility, but we think a better route to take maybe is to give out food vouchers. And we're hoping to lean on our townships who already give out food vouchers to kind of support that program for us. So we're suggesting $15,000 for that. And then Mayor, Mayor Akery brought up the technology support. There's a lot of underprivileged individuals in Moline who do not have access to the internet. Now, the one that you're looking at right now is proposing $100,000. When we get to the second set that I sent you that has the very small print, and I apologize for that, those dollars are going to be increased. Because up until the last minute of today, until about 5 o'clock, I was working with Project Now on getting numbers to also serve Head Start and to serve the seniors in the community as well as the Moline Public Schools. So we're hoping to do all that with bringing in broadband and being partners with MediaCom and Genesee Cable, as well as Moline School District and Project Now, to bring technology into the homes. And then for those people who do not have devices, we're hoping to provide a device for them to use. With the technology, the broadband, we're hoping to pay for the subscription service for 12 months for them. We are checking with HUD to see if we can pay it all upfront, which is more beneficial to us because, one, you've used the money, but then, two, you don't have to recertify the income after six months. So we're waiting to get that final answer from HUD on that. But we're hoping to do it for all three of those groups. Again, Moline School District, doing it for the seniors, and doing it for Head Start. Can we have the next slide, Don? So when I talk about income, you know, when I say low, moderate client and the income, this is just kind of reminder of what I'm talking about, like the number of people in the household. You can see if we go down in the 80%, that's the max that the household can make. So when we, all of our programs, like for the food assistance, for the shelter assistance, and for the technology through broadband, these are the income levels that they have to meet. So I just kind of put that in there for information. Don, can we have the next slide? Catching up with you on my computer. And then we're gonna suggest to keep money in there for business retention, doing a small business loan. Now, in the new revised slide, I think this one was decreased down to, I want to say, $80,000 to kind of relieve some money for, or release some money to do all the broadband that we want to do. But that would still give us 16 business loans at $5,000. We're proposing that those loans, again, would be a forgivable loan at one year. The next thing that we would like to do, suggest to do is education. I think we have to continually educate the public, the community, on COVID. So we're gonna reach out to the Rock Island County Health Department, as well as the CHC here in Moline, and ask them to help us support that cause by doing some public service announcements and some other media campaigning regarding COVID-19. And then the last thing that we're proposing in our slides, in our program here is having dollars to operate the program, to run it. Every year, HUD allows you to keep up to 20% of your allocation. We're under, we're under the 10% here. So we're not asking for the 20%. I think at last meeting, we had it like at $75,000. Heard some concerns about that, so we have reduced that down. So we're trying to get a lot of things out there to address COVID. Right now, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us with this funding. We know that we didn't receive funding for the second allocation, but hopefully we can receive some additional funding for the third allocation. Maybe if we can show HUD how well we're running our programs and how we reached out to our partners to help us run those, well, help us run those programs and connect with the community, I think would be a good thing for us. So if I have Council's direction tonight, Don, is it possible to jump into the other presentation so we can bring up the other slide? I just kind of want the Council to see the dollars that we were talking about as far as when it comes to the broadband. Like I said, Moline-Housen Authority did reach out to me today. They want to ensure that their students there that are in school will have the resources to have the e-learning in the fall and possibly for summer school. And I said, well, as long as they're included in the numbers that we're getting from the Moline Public Schools, the broadband is included for them. It's our understanding with the Moline Public Schools that they already have the technology devices. They already have a tablet or Chromebook. Where in the Head Start, they do not have a tablet necessarily, but they might have one in the household and not need one. And some of the seniors might not need one, but we have budgeted dollars if we had to buy them a tablet for Head Start as well as the seniors. But we're hoping that all the Moline students have their Chromebooks to do their homework and do their research on. So in the other slide that I sent to you guys, the other presentation I sent to you with the tiny font, I apologize. That was a last-minute thing, once I got the numbers. We do have money for, to address the $10 a month for the broadband for each household, as well as if we had to buy devices for Head Start in the senior center. And we're doing that all within the allocation that we're receiving in the first round of COVID.
What's the, do you know off the top of your head, KJ, while Don's looking for that, what the amount was that you had allocated for the technology, the digital equity?
I can read you in the numbers. I didn't add it up. We have $60,000 to pay for the subscription for 500 kids at Moline Public Schools. I know we had a range of 300 to 500, but we just went with the highest number. And then in talking with Mr. Ford at Project Now, even though they have 558 seniors that they serve, he gave me a number of 77. He said they reached out to them and a lot of the seniors said, spend that money somewhere else. It could be better used. Some of them might be apprehensive about new technology and learning how to operate it. So we rounded that number up to 100. And then he gave me a number of 60 for the Head Start children. So after talking with them, him this evening, we just decided to allocate for 200 kids, 200 people. So between the seniors and the Head Start, we came up with a number of 200. And then I supported 200 devices at $200 each for them to use the broadband and to pay for the subscriptions. For 12 months.
What was the total?
Let's see, we have $60,000 for Moline Public Schools, for the senior citizen program, $12,000 for 100 people. Head Start, $12,000 for 100 people. $20,000 for laptops for the seniors and $20,000 for laptops or Chromebooks for Head Start. So 20, 40, 64, 124.
So I think, well, I mean, not to nickel and dime this, but that seems high because isn't that, are you saying Chromebooks for every senior and every Head Start? Is that right? Is that what you proposed?
Well, that's how we're planning it. I don't think it's going to come out to be that way. We just thought it was better to be safe than sorry. And that money that is not used for that can be reallocated to something else through a substantial amendment. But that way, we don't fall short. And we didn't know if it's $9.99 for the fee every month, if they were going to have surcharges or additional taxes. That makes it like $15 for the month versus $9.99.
I mean, my personal reaction is that we don't want to inflate those numbers because we're giving up in other areas by doing that. And so I would cap it at $100,000 and just say, you know, this could be one configuration and we don't have to worry about a substantial amendment because I think that's probably richer than it needs to be. When I talked to the school district, they thought the 500 was probably high because they've got households that have more than one kid in it that don't have access to internet. Does that make sense? And so there were double kids from households? And so I think to say the high end is probably extreme. And I think that when they were throwing out that number, they were thinking of the Coal Valley kids, too. And they understand that those would be restricted from this program, that it would just be the Moline footprint. And so I would recommend an adjustment of giving that money back to the small business loans and restricting the digital equity project to $100,000. But that's my opinion. Alderman Parker?
So, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor Akery. But also, I had a question about Head Start. I'm not real familiar with it. What ages are those kids?
I believe it's preschool, isn't it, Mayor?
It's zero to five. It's babies, too. And one of the unique things about that, Alderman Parker, in talking to our Project Now Director, is that a lot of those kids are in the households of elderly grandparents. And so it's kind of an interesting combination. And that's what brings me to, sorry, to glob onto your statement. But I'm thinking that, because this digital equity thing is kind of new and we're talking about introducing it in households that may not have been exposed to internet, like the folks that you were talking to, KJ, where they're like a little apprehensive, that I like the education component, but not for COVID-19. I like it for using digital devices because I see it as an opportunity for our elderly residents to get health care that they need now that telecare has become, you know, a reasonable thing to do. Those kinds of things that are really important for our seniors to have access to. Alderman Parker, sorry to take your time. Go ahead.
It's okay, Mayor Akery. You can, you're the mayor. You do whatever you want. However, my question is, so it's age birth to five, you said, for Head Start? At age six, or whenever they go into kindergarten, they're going to be, they will be issued a Chromebook from the schools unless there's already one in the house for a kid that's kindergarten to fourth grade, correct? In which case, my understanding is, we went through this whole process last night at the Housing Authority meeting. From fourth, I think it's fifth grade through senior and high school, each kid gets their individual Chromebook and they get a couple of them throughout their school career. Prior to that, each household that has a kid in it from kindergarten to fourth grade, they're issued one. I believe that is correct. Is that right?
I don't know that for sure. I haven't talked with the school district, Mayor.
But I think it is. I think it is because we covered that last night. So I guess my question is a couple-fold. One, these kids are going to be getting their Chromebooks by the time they're in kindergarten anyway. I'm not so certain that there's a, I'd be questioning the huge amount of educational value prior to, you know, using a computer at the age of two or something. I mean, I've got a niece that's two years old and I wouldn't say there's a ton of education that goes on when using technology. I'd rather see those funds directed to our business retention because these people are in dire shape right now. They're still not able to open on a regular basis. And Lord only knows when that's actually going to happen. The second part of my question to you, KJ, is, it's an important one and I'm trying to remember what it is. So I'm stalling here just a little bit.
Do you want me to take some airtime? Because I'm going to argue against your first point. Okay, while Alderman Parker's trying to remember what he's going to say. My argument against why we shouldn't just dismiss the younger students is that their access to alternative means of education and exposure is very limited at this time, even more extremely limited than it was before. And I envision any of these tablets to come to those families with Moline Public Library cards associated with them, with that application already involved and so that those kids have access to our wonderful, you know, reading, online reading that's available through our Moline Public Library system. Alderman Parker?
So, but if they're in Head Start, they're already getting a certain level of education that they've been getting all along. I mean, up until the point in time where we decided to put a computer in a two-year-old's hand, right?
I think a lot of families do that.
Okay. I'm not saying they do or don't. I'm just wondering where that money is better spent. I'm not saying it's wasted on these kids. I'm just saying we have businesses that I'm not sure are going to be able to reopen unless they get significant help in order to do so based on what's taken place. You know, a lot of the payroll retention loans and things like that to the government are super restrictive and a lot of people have not been able to take advantage of that. My other point or question that I had, which I think I just remembered, is that this is just a one-shot deal. So we put a computer in a kid's hand or an elderly person's hand and we give them a hotspot for a year. After that year, we're not going to be able to help them again. This is not a sustainable model, is it? Or are we planning on putting that in our budget ongoing? So they're going to, so, okay, I'm close to an elderly person. My wife would say I am an elderly person. You give me a computer and an internet access for a year, that's great. If I can't afford it in year two, I just got a computer that I'm sitting there playing Solitaire on because I can't afford internet access. Unless we're going to make this a sustainable project, I struggle with the fact that we're going to provide all this to them for one year and then pull the plug on them and say, well, I'm sorry, you're going to have to figure it out from this point going forward, unless we have a plan. I haven't heard that plan, I don't believe, yet.
Well, and my response to that is that although this isn't a forever plan, I mean, that's not what we're voting on tonight, is that we're going to do this forever. It is very COVID, there are things happening in our, in our community that are very COVID-related that this type of investment would address. One is that people are struggling to get their unemployment insurance. This is a means for them to get that. They can't run down to the unemployment office and get ready access to it. It's a serious problem right now. And if anybody has applied for a job lately, I bet you they didn't apply in person. I bet you they went online and applied online. That's where all the jobs are listed. And so all of these families that have these children in it can also use this internet to apply for work. And that is something that is, that problem is accelerated and more impactful at this time than it will be in a year. Alderman Went?
KJ, I just want to make sure, in the PowerPoint presentation, it had like $100,000 was going to be able to service 200 families. And then on this one, the $60,000 was going to be able to do 500 families. And I'm just, I just want to make sure that I understand what that difference was and how we got from a costing $500 per family to now costing $120. What are we, what were we including in the PowerPoint calculation that we're not including on this one?
I think in the original PowerPoint, we were looking at buying the hotspots. And this $500 number, we're looking at paying just for the broadband. So $10 a month, so $120 for each one. So ten dollars a month, so a hundred and twenty dollars for each one of those comes up to the sixty thousand.
Okay.
So it'd be the twelve months at ten dollars or nine ninety-nine, uh, for the broadband charges. And like I said earlier, I believe Moline Public Schools already, those children already have their devices. So the, the forty thousand dollars would cover Head Start and seniors. If you guys wanna move forward with that, um, that would cover their devices. And then the other twenty-four thousand that's, uh, allocated for that would cover their service fees.
Alderman Went?
So I, 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 I think, thank you for that clarification. I, I just, I, it was just a, a, a large difference in the number of, uh, uh, impact. Um, I, I think what I'd like to do, based on, uh, some of the comments that the mayor made and, and some of the comments that, uh, Alderman Parker, uh, made is, uh, maybe, uh, I, I'd like to kinda shoot in between and say, uh, let's amend this, uh, and, uh, lump the technology in at ninety thousand. And then, uh, the, uh, X, this is my amendment to this plan, is, uh, uh, reduce that to ninety thousand and the remainder amount, uh, be dumped into the, uh, business, uh, retention portion.
Okay. So that'd be about thirty-four thousand going back into the business retention?
Yep. That's not a motion. I, I, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Second it, but.
Okay.
I'll second that. Parker?
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Went?
A, and, and part of the reason, uh, of that is, you know, there was just some, some comments, one, about the number of households that it's going to hit, uh, that the number we got included Coal Valley kids, uh, that when KJ was going through the, uh, number of seniors and Head Start, uh, that it was like seventy-seven here and sixty there, but we had budgeted for a hundred and a hundred. Um, I, I think that, uh, uh, over budgeting for what the, uh, possible need is, um, uh, when we've got limited funds and we've got, uh, a need for, uh, some of these immediately for some of our businesses, I think this is a, um, maybe a good compromise, uh, that I think we'll still be able to cover, uh, what we were intending to do with, you know, the five hundred families being able to hit with the sixty thousand dollars, um, that if we're able to not submit this as each one of these as a line item, but, uh, technology support in which we will do, you know, one of these four or five things and that's what the, uh, the ninety thousand dollars will be used for, I think is, uh, is probably a better way to go. That will, that way we don't have to do substantial amendments and, and those sorts of things and, uh, uh, use this, uh, money as soon as possible.
And I, I think the phrase in the, in the country right now is digital equity instead of technology support. So I think everybody, the industry understands that to be what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay, I can certainly switch that. That's not a problem. So then the ninety thousand would cover, it's all encompassed. So it would cover the service fees, it would cover any, uh, devices that we had to pay for as well, correct?
I think that's the motion, KJ.
Okay.
It's just allocating ninety thousand for this, this digital equity program. And then depending on how many households are impacted, um, there'll have to be some decision-making of, of, you know, if you run out of money for households, uh, then you don't have as much money for the devices.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Your Honor, this is Jeff Anderson. Do you mind if I, uh, add a comment that, uh, may have some bearing on, uh, what Alderman Went just had to say?
Please.
Um, I, I think it's a very good idea and we have been looking at this as a holistic technology. HUD uses the term, uh, broadband approach. Um, when it comes to submitting this to HUD and what you will probably see coming from staff to you, uh, we will be required most likely to break it down into three components of seniors, of youth, which are the school age, and then for children, which would be the Head Start or not yet in school. And those are the qualifying program matrix code designations that, uh, we are obliged to submit this to HUD. So I think we can deal with it kinda as a larger program. Um, but it will come to you as at least three separate funded activities. Within those activities, and KJ, uh, uh, and Tara could agree or disagree, but I think that the numbers would be such that hopefully we would not have to do a substantial amendment if we found the need to transfer funds, but could do that as an administrative amendment without, uh, crossing the thresholds we've previ- previously discussed. That's not a promise, but it's my gut feeling. And, uh, uh, anyway, just wanted to throw that in, so there's clarity on that. Thank you.
Jeff, is there a reason that you have to declare what category? Why, because we're not declaring that category for our business support? And we're not declaring, um, seniors and school age for the rental program?
No, those are, it's a very good question. Thank you. Um, those are individual activity categories, each with assigned, um, matrix code. Uh, however, when it gets into, um, uh, the, the support for the seniors, youth, and, uh, children, the service, public service categories that this activity would fall into, that we've been able to match thus far, breaks it down by age as opposed to just general broadband. And we can follow up with HUD to make sure we're not missing something. And again, KJ, correct me if you've seen something otherwise, but that's how it would be presented to and qualified for HUD's purposes.
Anybody else? Alderman Scoobmaker?
Same, same topic, uh, under this, but just a little, little unrelated. The, KJ, I think you were gonna put fifteen thousand dollars into food vouchers. Is that the right number?
Correct.
Could we just make that money available to the couple of food pantries that are in Moline? Or is that gonna be an issue because they don't, they don't identify income of people that come through the food pantries? I'd, I'd prefer not to run it through another layer of government. And, you know, the township is not gonna necessarily move things along quickly. So is that not possible to do the food pantries?
No, because with the food pantry, you know, I have to make sure it's a Moline residence who's getting the, uh, the food and then I would have to make sure that they meet the income. We're right now, the townships are already handing out food vouchers.
Alternate idea, can we, in our, in our efforts to work with the schools, can we provide the food vouchers to the school system for their folks that are already on the low or the free and reduced lunch? That they could hand those out to people that are already qualified so they don't have to go through a whole lot of paperwork and they can get them right out?
Uh, you know, that's, that's always a possibility, you know, based on, uh, how they do the income certification. If they provide us the list upfront, we could mail them out from here. Um, but yeah, we can certainly work with the school district on that, how to frame it.
And just my voice, if anybody else wants to add anything to that, I, I think that could be maybe a little, little better than working through the township and the extra hoops that that will cause.
KJ, there's not a problem with having multiple, um, ways to get the food vouchers out, is there?
No, we just need to frame it and, you know, have a understanding of it that we can explain to HUD, just to make sure that there is not a chance for misuse of the, the vouchers.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Yeah, KJ, um, going back to the, uh, what did you call it? Broadband Equity? Something, something like it. Um, for, for anybody that, um, if you start running low on, um, as you're identifying households to, um, uh, get these, uh, internet access and Chromebooks for, um, if any of those include Housing Authority houses, uh, w- we do have Housing Authority money from the CARES Act that we could help subsidize. I don't want, you know, in our process of supplying it to everybody, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that we supply it to everybody and we don't run out. I mean, I'd love, I'd like the idea of moving some money over into help our businesses, but there is another fund, um, that, uh, we haven't, we haven't identified how we're gonna use it, um, um, through the Housing Authority. So stay in touch with, uh, John Affoon at the Housing Authority in case you need, um, some extra funds in order to complete this project.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Like I said, I had a short conversation with him today. I know we reached out to HUD because we did get some rental assistant requests, uh, applications from some of the people living in Moline Housing Authority to help them out with their rent. And HUD did rule that we can help out the Housing Authority, uh, with these federal funds. Another thing that HUD did tell us with the funds, uh, uh, for the emergency rent and utility assistance, unfortunately, we cannot pay water bills to the city of Moline since we own the company. But we can help them with their gas and electric and we can help them with their rent, but we can't support their water bill if they're delinquent.
KJ, can you address your, um, intention to provide more COVID education? I, I understand that, that, um, that is important, but it feels like that's so well-covered by other entities that are better at that kind of education than we would ever be. Would you, would you consider doing some other type of education, like the digital equity education? And I'm thinking we could, like, the librarians would be a wonderful resource to help facilitate people getting access to, um, things through, uh, digital means that they maybe aren't used to doing. Would you consider doing something like that for education instead of COVID?
Oh, absolutely, Mayor. That, that's a very good suggestion. There's a lot of people who don't have comfort when it comes to using a, a tablet or a Chromebook, you know? I'm still learning every day, but I try to do my best. I depend on YouTube. No, uh, but no, we can certainly look at that, maybe reallocating either five or seventy-five hundred of that, uh, for that purpose. Um, I would have to work with Jeff and, uh, Tara to see if we're paying for salaries, then it's a different approach that we need to take versus paying for the, the class itself, if you will. Because like with the, uh, Rock Island County, you know, we're, we're paying for the PSAs. We're not paying people to put them together. So I guess we're paying for the advertisement so we don't have to worry about, uh, prevailing wage or anything like that with the diallopers. But depending on how we wanna set it up with the library, um, I just need to take a look and, uh, have a conversation with staff and possibly HUD to make sure we're, we're moving forward accordingly. How much are you guys suggesting to be reallocated maybe for digital education?
Well, I was suggesting the full amount because I don't think it would be prudent to, for us to fund additional COVID-19 education, just because I think there's so much information out there already. Um, so, and if not the full amount, uh, I don't know, ten thousand dollars and have it be staffed from, uh, city staff, then we don't have to worry about prevailing wage. And then use the extra five for business support. That would.
Okay. So take out COVID education altogether?
I, I mean, that's my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I feel like there's some great educational, um, already all sorts of really slick advertising and, and social media and print. You know, it just feels like it's everywhere right now. So I think that we have a, a, we have a motion on the floor for the, the adjustment from the, um, hundred and twenty-four thousand to the ninety thousand and then transferring that balance over to the business loan program. Is that correct? Alderman Went? So that motion's on the floor. I think that was a standalone. Do we wanna take a vote on that? Um, is there any other comment regarding that, that switch? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Just for clarification, KG, KJ, in the, um, proposal that you have, those are loans, right? They're.
They're forgivable loans after one year.
So I wouldn't be in support of that. I would rather have it flow through the system and reuse it. What's the rest of the council feel? Alderman Went?
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I think that they need to be tied to some, um, uh, some requirement to stay in business, stay within the city of Moline, uh, stay open for, uh, in, in a number of years. If, I, I, I would, I would prefer that there's some kind of payback for it so that we can recycle it and, and then we have this fund of, of, of money that we can, uh, continue to, um, uh, encourage more business development and, and all that stuff in the city of Moline. Uh, but I would be willing if maybe, you know, uh, after, you know, five years, it's, it's forgivable or after three years, half of it's forgivable and the rest it needs to be paid back. I, I don't, I don't wanna burden them with too much of, uh, of payments coming right out of, uh, of COVID. Uh, they're already gonna be probably cash strapped and, and cash flow, uh, is gonna be difficult. Um, and so, um, if there's a way that we can do it, um, in which there is some payment of it, if not all of it, um, uh, and those, uh, um, requirements that they have to stay open and stay in with, within Moline. Because I think that there's some neighboring communities that have gotten themselves in a bit of a pickle where they've given out money to, um, uh, places that just then aren't opening up or are even moving to other locations. And, uh, it was just money that they, they gave out the door and, uh, I'm not sure if, uh, the city's gonna get the benefit that they were expecting.
Alderman Parker?
Yeah, um, I, I like the idea of trying to retain some of it, but since it's HUD money originally, are there gonna be strings attached to how we can reuse that money, KJ?
That's one of the questions that has not been answered for us. We certainly have asked that question to HUD, but they just have not responded with an answer to that yet. If we treat it as program income and it comes back to us, does it have to go onto another COVID activity? Or does it have to go onto the same COVID activity? Or can it just go into any CDBG activity? Uh, we just don't know the answer to that yet.
KJ, could, could we propose that it flow into the revolving loan fund program?
Can we propose that it flows into that?
Yeah, when they pay it back, it just goes into our standard revolving funds for loans.
Uh, Mayor, I would have to get with HUD on that because, I mean, with your revolving loan fund, I guess the criteria is, is not the same right now. So if you, if you give me time, when we write up the proposed use and bring it back in the, uh, in the policies and procedures, maybe I would have that information at that time. Uh, because I mean, we're looking at the revolving loan for a model. We're looking at the way that Davenport's doing theirs. And then we have another entity that we're looking at theirs and we're trying to combine it for the best use for Moline. Uh, but I think that's a great suggestion and I wouldn't mind looking into it for you.
Thank you. Alderman Parker, I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you. Sorry, you're on mute.
I know. God, I hate that. Um, I, no, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't gonna loan all this money and then have it come back to us, we don't know what to do with it. Um, you know, we've had some of those projects before that, um, you know, we, we just, we gotta do something with it. I just wanna be sure HUD's clear, uh, direction is pretty clear as to, um, if we do receive back that. But you've already covered that. So, KJ, if you could just find out for us, I'd appreciate it.
I will work on that tomorrow for you.
Mayor, may I clarify something?
Thank you.
Janine has a clarification.
So when Alderman Went was talking about that, um.
Can you all hear, Janine? I'm sorry.
So Alderman Went, when you were talking about the, um, that possibly at least half of the loan might be forgiven if the business remains in Moline, are you talking about a specific period of time?
Well, I, I, I think the idea is, I, I think I would prefer that it needs to be paid back. But what I was just, uh, trying to indicate was if there wasn't, um, support for that, uh, that we would, um, have some other kind of, uh, where a portion of it would be forgivable and the rest paid back. Because I think that there is some, some benefit, if, again, HUD will allow us to do it, of recycling these, these funds to continue to give, uh, benefit to our, uh, our businesses, uh, much like our revolving, revolving loan fund. Um, I, I, I'm not sure if a year is a long enough, uh, period of time for us to really understand if this business is, um, you know, stuck around because. if this business is, you know, stuck around, because we don't know what, where, or what we're going to be at in the, in the, you know, within the next 12 months with, with the COVID thing. So, yeah, that period of time, I, I think is, is up for a discussion. I know our other program that we did was, was a longer period of time than just one year. And if we're asking for payments back, I think it needs to be a longer period of time because otherwise you're just asking them to cash flow a loan back right when they're trying to get back on their feet. And so, you know, whether that needs to be a three or five years, which our, our other program is, that's what I would prefer to support. But again, that comes down to what KJ can get from HUD on what would be acceptable.
So KJ, the sense I'm picking up from the, from, well, my, my opinion and the council people that have spoken is that, I think we, we feel pretty good about the loan program that we established for COVID-19 with the five-year payback. I, I think that, I can't remember if it was no interest or 1%. What did we end up at?
It was 1%.
1%.
1%? And so maybe it would be an option to, I think the 1% was meant to keep people aware of it, but I think it would be an option to have it be 0% on this. But have it be structured that way, that seemed to be really attractive to people. I mean, there may have been some people that didn't want it because it wasn't a grant, but there were a lot of people that did want it. And I think those people are the people that intend to keep, to pay it back. So, can you...
Well, we can certainly take a look at that and kind of model it after that, if that's the council's direction. You know, Jeff is, Jeff Maynes is working with us on this, as well as Tara and Jeff and myself, and probably a few others. But we can certainly take a look at that model and see if we need to tweak it at all for the CDBG sense or not. But come back to you guys with the ad information and our policies and procedures if you guys approve a five-year loan. So what I'm hearing, you want it to be a loan and not a grant and not a forgivable loan. You want the money paid back. Is that correct?
Does that misrepresent anyone? Alderman Schoolmaker? Oh, sorry, Alderman.
I think it would be, I think it would be good to clarify, you know, in the directions for the program, if they've already received a grant from the city or a grant or a loan, because we've done a little bit of both here, to make sure that, you know, it's clear whether they're eligible or not. And I'm, I'm not suggesting necessarily one way or another. I probably am favoring the side that, that they could do this, you know, that, that, that they could still apply for this because it's a separate fund. But I think we should clarify that in the directives.
Mayor, one thing that I just learned is that our revolving loan funds are no longer tied to CDBG HUD. So if money comes back as program income, we could not homing them with the revolving loan fund.
Well, we could if they're willing to release it. So what difference does it make to HUD if we're giving it away or if we're taking it back for another purpose? I think that needs to be clarified. I don't think it would have to be for COVID purposes in five years.
Okay, so keep it COVID and not just revolving loan? Okay.
No, 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 that it wouldn't be COVID in five years. I'm assuming the impact of COVID-19 in five years will be resolved, I'm hoping.
Okay.
And so I think the proposal, what we're asking for direction on is can we, can we have this be a loan program and then reuse the funds in the future for economic development, small business support? Is that acceptable to HUD at this time?
Okay.
That's our, what we're posing to the HUD. Does the council agree? Are you okay with that direction to KJ? So I think we are looking at that, and we aren't talking about a ton of loans here, you guys. We're talking about maybe 10, no, $5,000 loans, and we're looking at, I'm sorry, how many?
We're looking at about 21, once we add that other 24,000 in there, because right now we have 80. So that gets to 16, then you add the other 24. So right around 20, 20 loans.
Do you need a vote on that, KJ?
Well, tonight I kind of wanted to get your direction because moving forward, then I need to put this into a plan and have a, basically a seven-day comment period, two days for HUD and five days for the public. And then based on that, then I'm going to come back to council so you guys can improve the final plan and take it in consideration, any public comments that we receive, and then we'll send it up to HUD for final approval. So right now, tonight, I just kind of wanted to get a feel of what you guys wanted me to put into the plan. And then based on that, we'll put it in the plan. We'll have the public comment period, and then we'll come back to council in June for final approval to send it up to HUD so we can get the programs in motion.
So your proposal, you've got 200,000 in for rent support. You've got about 100,000 in for business if we transfer that over. Is that the right split from council's perspective? Do you have any feedback for KJ on that? Everybody okay with that? So is, can I, can I just get some motions so we formalize this? Can I get a motion on the amount for rent subsidy? KJ is proposing 200,000.
I make that motion.
We have a motion to support that by Alderman Moyer. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Berg. So we have a $200,000 rent subsidy program. Alderman Parker?
I'm taking, and I haven't read through any of this, but I'm assuming that the rent subsidy would not be eligible for Section 8 housing folks because they're already getting a rent subsidy?
Well, HUD did tell us that we can pay for, we can help support Moline Housing Authority, so...
Well, I would rather help the residents than the housing. We have, we're, we're doing fine right now. So I would rather not support, you know, to, to help fund the Housing Authority. We got, we have residents out there that are really hurting, that they're the ones that need these funds, not the Housing Authority.
Okay.
And I, and I say that because I'm on the board. So I do have a little bit of expertise on where we stand financially as a board.
Does anyone have a conflicting opinion on that?
Dave, Alderman Parker, I just want to make sure to clarify and that I'm understanding it. So you don't want to help Moline Housing Authority residents, but we can help section, those that have Section 8 vouchers?
No, no, Moline Housing, Moline Housing Authority residents and Section 8, I, I think should be excluded from rent subsidies because they're already getting a rent subsidy. Section 8, you know, is, by definition, is a rent subsidy. So I, I don't want to give, I don't want people making money on the deal, basically.
No, thanks for clarifying. Yep.
Yeah.
So can I call for a vote on this particular part, the rent subsidy? All those in favor, please indicate support of 200,000 rent subsidy that will be restricted from Section 8 and Moline Housing Authority.
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. So we're buttoning this up, KJ. It's just kind of...
All right.
So now, now let's, I'm looking for a motion that takes into account that KJ's got 15,000 set aside for education for COVID-19. If any of that money you want transferred over into the business loan or, yeah, business loan program, Harvey wanted to state that. So we're over like, we're probably at like 110,000. Alderman Wint?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we transfer 10,000 for technology education and 5,000 into the, the business retention bucket.
So the total business retention bucket is now 109,000? And then you've got the digital education at 11? No, 10,000? Is that right?
We were at 80, 80, 90,000 for the loan program already, I mean, for the technology program already. And then we added 24,000, and now we're adding another 10,000, correct?
No, you're moving 24,000 over to the business loan? And that's, so it's 80 plus 24 plus, Mike just suggested an additional five. So it's, it's 109. Can you say six just to make it easier so it's not a weird number? So do I?
So moved.
It's 34.
Oh, we did move 34. Oh, so it's 120.
So we were down to 90 in technology, and now you're adding back.
Dirk is working with the numbers here, and so he's going to come to the podium and tell us what, what Mike wants.
So, starting with the 124 that KJ presented this evening, Alderman Wint successfully moved 34 over to the business program. So we were down to 90 in the technology. Now you've asked to move money from, what is it?
To divide up the COVID-19 training.
Right, and five of it to go back to technology, which will move the technology piece, the equity.
It's the opposite. He said 10 for the technology education.
Digital equity, then that brings us back to 100,000 on digital.
Well, yeah, KJ will leave it loose like that and have the training. Can you leave it loose like that, KJ, or do you have to have training in a weird, separate bucket?
We're probably going to have to have training in a separate bucket.
Okay, so I'm asking, I'm asking when to do the split, though? At 6 and 9, so that you end up with 120,000 in the business loan program?
So moved, 6 and 9.
So, so the motion on the floor would put 120,000 into the business loan program? Do I have that number right? I'm looking at Alderman Moyer.
I think you do.
Okay, 120,000 in the business loan program, 9,000 in a digital education program. That's the motion that's on the floor right now.
You second.
And we've got from Alderman Moyer. Sorry, we got Alderman Moyer in there. So we had a motion by Alderman Wint, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this topic? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. And then we've got an allocation for administration. Do you still feel comfortable with that number, KJ?
Yes.
Do we want to do a motion? Alderman Schoolmaker?
Do, can we get an idea of the timeframe to implement rolling this, these funds out? And is there anything we can do to make it easier for you to roll them out?
We hope that these rolled out.
My point is, we should do everything we can to get them out quickly. How can we help you get them out quickly?
Well, thank you for that question. Like I said, our next step is to have the public input comment period, and then come back to council. We'll come back to council that first week in June and ask for consideration at the Cowan Council. And then the next day, we'll electronically submit it to HUD. Typically HUD has up to 45 days to approve a plan, but they know when it's coming in as a COVID substantial amendment, they give, even consideration to it earlier. So they're not wanting to take the 45 days because they understand the rush. But you have to understand, there's a lot of people submitting at the same time. So they're going to get it to us as soon as they can, so I don't think it's going to be the 45 days. We'll probably hear back within probably two, two weeks or so from HUD. So hopefully by sometime late June, right before 4th of July, we're ready to roll these programs out. In the meantime, we'll work on the environmentals and staff, get those out of the way, and be ready to go. Get, and we'll work with Dirk on getting subrecipient agreements put together for our partners to sign and kind of framing up how each program will work, you know, who's buying what, who's being reimbursed for what, things like that.
Okay, well, just, just so we're applying as much urgency as we can, obviously, you know, the sooner we get this out, the better for the businesses and residents.
Yes, we'll come back to the first meeting in June as the anticipated timeframe that we're working within.
Thank you.
Do you feel comfortable with the direction from council, KJ?
Yes, I think it's been a very healthy conversation here tonight, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you, KJ. Thank you for working with us on it, letting us be a part of how you've designed this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next informational, we have Chief Gault presenting the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program Grant.
Thank you, Your Honor and council, and welcome, Marty, to Moline. I just wanted to give you an update that we have applied for the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Grant Program. Those of you that are involved in the council have seen this on an annual basis. State law requires that the law enforcement agency in the municipality provide a bulletproof vest for every law enforcement officer in the agency and that we replace it when it expires. We already budget for the matching funds every year for this, and this is a 50% matching fund grant. So we'll be trying to replace 32 vests in a two-year period.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think I need a motion for that.
Thank you.
It's just informational.
Do you have any, anyone have any comments or questions for chief? No, thank you very much for bringing that forward. The next item is the Illinois Liquor Control Commission Tobacco Enforcement Program.
So this is also something that many of you have seen on an annual basis. The Illinois Liquor Commission provides funding for us to do retail checks of tobacco retailers to make sure that they're complying with state law. And as, as you know, and we've talked about before, tobacco and underage abuse is a problem. And so these funds allow us to check 48 of our retailers in the city of Moline three times. And it also includes education packets for our retailers. This is 100% funded by the Tobacco Enforcement Program. There is no matching funds. So just alerting you that we're applying again for this program, and we'll be moving forward with our, our plan to, again, enforce and check our tobacco retailers in the city of Moline.
Thank you. We have, the next item is the e-crash option for completing and filing crash reports. Dirk Price?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent you the memo. We analyzed where we've been with e-crash and what it could possibly do in terms of some administrative costs and savings going forward. The negative deleterious effects of e-crash, that is, that they have the subscribers, the chiropractors, the lawyers, who automatically get the report. That's happening anyway because they submit FOIA requests to us that we fulfill. So, yes, they get the reports a little later, by a few days, maybe five days, but they get them. And so to the mayor's point and your point previously as a council, by trying to prevent that from happening, that we can't stop that. What we can do around that, if you agree to move forward with this, is, one, it allows the officers to key in the data, and then it's keyed in only once. Right now, it has to be keyed in or written a second time by somebody else and then sent. And so we avoid the second keying of the information, if you will, that it's keyed in once. But at the time of the report being filed out, a card is handed out to people who have been in the collision. And that card says that you can get the driver's information report for free from Lexus, whose product this is, online. What we propose is to add to that a statement that says, or you can get your full report for free from the city through a FOIA request. And I'll work with them and come up with a simplified form, but any email asking for it would satisfy as a FOIA request. And so reminding them they get the full report for free. What happens is that people want the full report, even though they typically don't need it as a private citizen, they still want it. And as a matter of convenience, if you want it right that minute, you can get it online from Lexus right that minute for paying the money Lexus charges. 80 to 90%, depending on the jurisdiction, of who Lexus sells these reports to at full, the sell, sale of the full report is commercial. It's insurance companies who need it for their file. It's all other people. So really, it's only 10 to 20%, depending on where you are, citizens who are asking for it. And if we put on the card that it's clear they can get the full report for free from us, I think that will save some of the heartburn that this whole setup goes with. They're the only certified provider at the moment for the state police, and they're throughout the state of Illinois for that reason, because it's efficient. The form is filled out just once, and we move on and live with the commerce side of people being in a collision. So the informational is just to go present that memo and find out if there's any objection to moving forward with trying to bring you back a contract.
Is there any comment? Alderman Parker?
So Dirk, do we anticipate the FOIA requests going up or down? Because, you know, if the chiropractors and lawyers aren't, aren't filing FOIA requests, is that offset by the people involved in the accident filing the FOIA request? Because my thought would be great if we could reduce the number of FOIA requests and reduce the pressure on staff to provide those.
So on FOIA requests, I do think that, that they would go down for this reason. Lexus would no longer be filing one every week as they do. Lexus would no longer be filing one every week as they do. And the chiropractors and lawyers, they can do it if they want it quicker, but most of them subscribe to the product, to e-crash. And so, they wait for the week for Lexus Nexus to get the FOIA information from us. They're usually content to wait a week or two to send the thing out. They haven't put that much pressure on. So, I don't think that'll change much. Though, what marginally will happen there is it'll decrease it. And then in terms of the pressure on staff for the private citizens who want it for free, I think that that's, I think we've signed up for that. I think we're ready to do that.
Alderman Williams.
Could the citizens get them from their insurance companies?
That depends on the terms of their agreement with their insurance company. The insurance company pays for it from Lexus Nexus. So, that's between them. They're all a little different.
Alderman Williams.
The problem I would see with that, although that's probably the best way to go about it, is that an insurance agent would just ask the person involved in the crash, hey, go down and get your free cop and bring it down here. That way, I don't have to request it, or we don't have to pay for it. Independent insurance agent or, you know, someone trying to game the system.
Right, the only thing that you're required to get is the driver information. And that's what you're supposed to provide to your insurance company. That is free from Lexus to you. So, if that's what your insurance company said, can you get the driver's information? That comes free to you from Lexus. It's the full report with all the metrics, where the officers indicated which way the cars were pointed, whether it was wet or dry and all that. It's all of that. If they want that, the insurance company is supposed to get that itself.
They could and pay for it. Or they could have the insurer go down, file a FOIA, and get it for free.
That's between the insurance company and that.
Well, they could file a FOIA and get it for free, too. So, there's no cash disadvantage to us because the person that's out of the cash is e-crash. We don't particularly care about them. Chief has a comment.
Chief reminds me that on FOIA, we're redacting a bunch of personal information. Insurance company wants everything that's in the crash report typically. So, driver's license numbers, so they can, you know, figure out if the person's had their license revoked or whatever.
Sure, good.
Oh, Alderman Went.
Well, this also allow us to do some more modeling and figure out where multiple crashes are and intersections more easily than what our current system is being able to provide.
Yeah, so over time, once we get the information in there, it does come with a tool in the backend that can be used for that.
Chief Gault, what's your, how do the officers feel about this? Do they want this?
Yes.
Thank you. There's no debate? No, no, I like this succinctness.
Just trying to be brief. Yes, obviously, it's a lot easier. Right now, we're completing handwritten reports, including handwritten diorams. And this would streamline that process greatly. It was something I'm familiar with from my previous employer. We had it there, and you saw the memo. All of our neighboring cities have this currently. So, it's the current technology.
Are there any other comments or questions? I think you've gotta go. No concerns, right? All right. Dirk and Chief are moving forward with this. The next item is also Dirk's Practices and Procedures for Utility Service Fees Update.
Thank you again. So, this is an update on the council's direction on the motion of Alderman Waldron concerning the payment plans and reviving the possibility of disconnection for unpaid water bills. And so, under the Code of Ordinances, right now, the only entity that can sign agreements is the owner. And our payment plan procedures that we have in place are involved signing by the owner. The Finance Department has a series of different protocols, but they all involve the owner. So, to have a payment plan with the tenant, we need to amend those ordinances. And so, your options are, as we go forward, to amend a payment plan by the tenant. One, that we enter into it with the tenant, that they put some money down, and we have the payment plan with them. We have a payment plan with the tenant with notice to the owner. Or we have a payment plan with the tenant with required consent by the owner. And so, those are the options. So, in trying to write the ordinance that you asked to bring back to modify the procedures during COVID, where we're not imposing the late fees on the water bills if they're late, but did want to revive the possibility of shut off for non-payment, I need an answer to that question. Is it tenant only? Is that okay? Is it tenant with notice to the landlord that there's a payment plan? Or is it tenant with consent by the owner?
So, I have a question for you, Dirk. Is it in the best, which one of those options is in the best interest of the city? And which one of those options is in the best interest of the renter? And which one of those options is in the best interest of the landlord?
As far as the city is concerned, because the landlord is always responsible for the bill, it doesn't make a difference to the city on the financial side. But in terms of the goal of the city is expressed in trying to provide relief during this period of the state of emergency, the first one, letting the tenant sign up for the payment plan fulfills that goal the most. The one that's best for the landlord is obviously they consent to everything. And that goes with them being responsible for the bill at the end of the day. The middle ground for both the city, well, the city doesn't care so much, but the middle ground between the tenant and the landlord is with notice to the landlord.
Alderman Skumaker.
Your Honor, I like the middle ground. I think notice to the tenant or notice to the landlord is important. Gives them some opportunity to take some different actions if they want to, but it doesn't require their consent and lets the tenant make the arrangements on their own. Keeps an extra hoop out of the way.
Any other comments? See a thumbs up from Alderman Went. Alderman Waldron, did you have something you wanted to share?
Oh, I agree.
Do you need a vote? Or do we have any dissenting? Anybody not want to be the middle ground?
I have my direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is JD Shelty. It's the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, DCIP, grant by the Department of Defense and Rebuild Illinois Funding by Illinois Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me, thank you, Your Honor. I come before you tonight to kind of talk about a funding program that has been, it's been in the department, it's been a line item in the Department of Defense budget for several years. And this year, it finally got an appropriation earmarked in there for about $50 million. And earlier, I'm gonna say probably around February, the mayor and I wrote a letter and urged the Pentagon to come out with some guidance documents on how this funding was going to be applied and pushed out. And the guidance document just came out last week that talked about how this funding was gonna be eligible and available for different communities like ours that have a military installation that is kind of supported or integrated into our community. And so, Don, if you put me up to the next slide. So, if you remember, our city engineer had come and talked to you in the past about the 16th Street viaduct or the 14th Street access to the arsenal and what we anticipated was gonna be about a $6 million repair to us in the future. That's a city viaduct and abutment that goes in there and supports the arsenal. And it gives us the only access to the arsenal on the south side of the railroad tracks. So, we understand, you know, all the different reasons why it's a key feature for them for access. So, as we look through this and the guidance that came down, it looks like the funding would be available through this DCIP program. And that's about 50% is the minimum they would fund for these different projects that support military installations that are tied to different communities. And so, our estimate back, I know a few years ago, when the engineer came and talked to the city council, was about $6 million to do the reconstruction and repair work on that. And at that point in time, the staff recommendation was to hold off and use MFT funds after our commitment to the I-74 bridge project for our local portion had been completed and exhausted in 2021. And so, what we're proposing to take a look at with this DCIP program now is to use the 50% available funding towards that $6.7 million engineering construction estimate that we have on this. And then, this Rebuild Illinois funding that we just became aware of here last week as well, that is the funding that comes forward from the state over six installments, next three years, every six months, of 2.87 million. But it's gotta be used for bondable type construction or bondable issues, which this meets the criteria for. And then, it's gonna be approximately 7% left that we would have to come up with for local funds or, you know, for additional to meet that 50% match. And we're recommending then using MFT for that portion of it rather than using MFT for the whole portion of it, like we talked about several years ago. So, Don, if you could come to the next slide. So, we've looked at, so we looked at this program and the different criteria that are gonna come to be required with this application. And we had looked at the Roosevelt Group, who helps us with the Rock Island Arsenal. I think it's called the Rock Island Arsenal Development Group.
There's the Defense Alliance, and there's the Development Group, too.
Okay, yeah, so, this is the person that I think it's Tim Frye put us in contact with. And we got a response back from the Roosevelt Group. They basically gave us three pages to kind of come back and talk to us about the timeline that we need to work with and some of the different key components that are gonna be imperative to have a successful application that comes in, you know, to trigger this funding the way they understand it. And we check all the boxes to come in with a highly successful consideration for this project. And the trigger for this, though, to use our state funds is that we have to use a qualification-based selection process for like an engineering partner that was gonna come alongside of us for the design. So, Laura and I, just because there's no commitment or no obligation, we made the decision last week, just for the sake of time, to go ahead. And we solicited for a qualification-based selection last Friday. It's gonna take about two weeks just to keep the timeline moving. So, we stayed within this strict timeline I'll show you that we have to follow. So, the reason to do that is not necessarily we can use these state funds without that process, but we can use these state funds for a federal project like this without the qualification-based selection process. So, we wanted to make sure we didn't step forward too quick and then get ourselves disqualified for this 3.7 million. So, Don, you can go to the next slide. I won't go through and read all that. The Rebuild Illinois funding, and it's kind of interesting, they're pushing this money up quick. We actually, I think Carol will tell you, we got our first $477,000 check. It showed up last night. It came yesterday afternoon. So, it can only be used for bondable expenditures, though we can't use it for maintenance. It comes in like MFT. It comes in actually with our MFT, but we have to separate it out, show it segregated. And then, it has to be used for specific projects that have a 13-year lifespan or more, something you would typically bond for. And I won't go through all the details of it, but you can use it for development, you can use it for design, you can use it for reconstruction of roadways, major bridges, rehabilitation. And we actually went ahead and communicated with our contacts at IDOT and got email confirmation back from them that they said this would be an ideal project to try and pair up, you know, with the federal funds. You know, they cautioned us that if we, and we've got another list we want to show you of kind of alternative projects, if we weren't successful for the DCIP funding, where we'd recommend maybe moving these state funds towards. But we can't use it for any administrative overhead expenses, any repairs to existing roads and bridges that aren't, you know, major reconstruction. We can't use it for patching concrete or filling ceiling cracks, any kind of normally anticipated repairs. So, the funds have to be earmarked for a project within one year of receipt. So, that still meets all the criteria to pair it up with this DCIP funding. And Don, if you'll go to the next slide. If we aren't successful for the DCIP funding, then we've already identified different projects, and we'll continue to start putting cost estimates with these. So, by September, if we come forward and learn that we haven't received the DCIP award for the funding to move it towards this project, then we've already got, I guess, a list of projects that we can prioritize and bring forward to council. And we haven't done anything towards precluding ourselves from using this state money because we only have to get started and get this activated out on projects within 12 months of the time we start receiving it from the state. So, the reason I wanted to come kind of informationally and talk to you tonight, Your Honor, was because we'll probably come back to you with that qualification-based selection award right around the 9th of June. But I'm also gonna ask you because we have to get a supporting documentation from the Colonel, which Colonel Marr has committed to this. He's gonna hitch his wagon to this project. He thinks this is probably the best project that he's seen. He thinks it's got the one, the chance for the most traction on something that supports the arsenal and meets the criteria for this DCIP funding. So, he's committed to give us the letter of support that's required to go in with our packet. And then, we need to get authorization from the city council to go ahead and move forward and make this application. So, I wanted to give you a kind of a heads up and make sure that you're okay with us working on it. Jeff Anderson is committed to work with Laura Clower. She's connected with us here tonight, if anybody had any specific questions for her. But they think with the assistance of Tim Frye and his folks, Colonel Marr has offered up Jonathan Ramsdale out there from his team to help us with the application. And then, we'll obviously circle in by state because this is their wheelhouse to make sure this thing has every opportunity to be successful and then come back to you for that approval.
Do we have any comments from the council? Alderman Went.
I love the idea of the DCIP grant through the feds to pay for half of this. But I've got some real concerns about, you know, this idea, this Rebuild Illinois. A lot of this is coming from increased taxes on fuel and other resources, that the opportunity costs, we look at this, what's right here, all the different projects that residents of Moline would be able to benefit from if we are using that $2.8 million towards these projects. The 16th Street viaduct, it's nice for the arsenal. It's convenient for their people if they want to come off the arsenal or if somebody wants to go on the arsenal and miss the train. But it is not for the residents of Moline mission critical to have it there. And so, I guess what I would push or like to amend this is that we move forward with the, trying to figure out if we can get that grant. But we direct staff to work with the arsenal to find other funding sources to match that other 50% and not take away from the residents of Moline's allocation out of the state funds. So, that would be my motion.
I'll second that, Mike. Alderman Went. We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Berger. Is there any discussion on that item?
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Potter.
Do you have any idea where that, where those other funds might come from? I mean, I know we have MFT available. Is there gonna be another grant program? Is that what you're speculating? I guess I don't understand.
Alderman Went.
No, I don't think that it should be coming out of the city of Moline's budget or from taking away from projects done to the roads and infrastructure within the city of Moline. I'd be looking to the arsenal out of their budget or other grants or federal funding that they may have access to or other resources to make up the rest of that 50%. Now, obviously, our staff is going to be involved because it's within the city of Moline. It connects to our roads. And so, we're gonna wind up being involved with this process. But I don't think, I think the opportunity costs are too high to take all of our funding from these Rebuild Illinois and our MFT to just throw all at this one project.
Alderman Potter, there is one funding source that I'm thinking of, and that is, JD mentioned it. It's the Rock Island Arsenal Development Group. uh, JD mentioned it, it's the Rock Island Arsenal Development Group. They have reserves of $750,000 that are restricted to be spent on, um, uh, things that exclusively benefit the arsenal, for the arsenal, that type of thing. And that came from a program that they had, that they were doing rentals on that, on the arsenal. I think that, um, there's, there's some transition right now, um, but there's $750,000 there. Alderman Potter?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm all for looking for alternative funding sources. I, um, I, I believe that, that, uh, this roadway, although Alderman want is correct, it's not as, uh, uh, useful to our citizens, if you will, than, than many of the other projects that are listed there, but, uh, um, I, I believe we're obligated to keep this open and, uh, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to look for all those other things. I'm just not sure, uh, you're gonna find anything else out there beyond, uh, you know, what's obviously come down from, uh, the department, uh, for a 50% uh, payment of, uh, what basically is a local project.
Alderman Wynn?
Uh, I, um, to that comment that we're required to keep this open, I, I, I was told specifically from Scott Hinton that that's not true, that we are not obligated in any way, uh, that, uh, we start ownership right after the exit off to, um, uh, River Drive. And in fact, um, Scott Hinton told me that it would, uh, cause there were some discussions, um, with Renew and, and different things, that it'd be about a million dollars to take it down, uh, because there were some discussions on what if it came down and how would that look with the, uh, historic block and, uh, uh, the Collector Center and how that would develop if that was taken down. So, uh, now, I don't have any firsthand knowledge, but that was directly told to me by Scott Hinton that we are in, under no obligation, that we do it as a courtesy, uh, to the, uh, the arsenal, um, uh, and, um, and so there is no requirement or agreement that, uh, requires us to, uh, uh, provide that access over the tracks and, and over to, uh, uh, 14th and on to Fifth Avenue.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, JD.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll, um, I'm up there again, I'm gonna grab some different stuff.
Yeah, now for the big one. Somebody need a break? COVID-19 update. JD Shelty and Carol Barnes.
All right, Carol, I saw her there earlier. Now, I don't see her, but, uh, maybe she just turned off her camera.
There she is.
Hi, Carol.
Hi.
Are you, uh, are you ready? So, I guess, uh, Carol wanted to give an update tonight on some of the financial information that she's had coming in. She had, uh, more, and like I stole her thunder, I guess, on talking about the fact that we got that first, um, that first round of, uh, the Rebuild Illinois funds that came in already. I know she was gonna mention that to you, but, uh, she had some other different funds that, uh, that came in with, uh, some, uh, information that we've been forecasting on, so she confirmed some more up, and she wanted to talk about those funds with you tonight. And, uh, then I, I was just gonna let you know, uh, Your Honor, that, uh, Allison and I have been working through and going through and meeting with all the departments. We still have, I think, four more meetings scheduled through, uh, this week, but if any of you, I know I've been delayed on replying to emails and I apologize, but we've been consumed with this and we're making some good traction, so, uh, we'll continue that on, and I think we've actually finish up next Tuesday. So, uh, with that, Carol, I'll let you, uh, go ahead. Don's got your, got your presentation up.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor and council. And Don, you can actually go to the next slide. I'm gonna try, or I guess you can go two in, one more. I'm gonna try to keep the update brief tonight. Um, primarily, I'm going to focus on the revenues. There weren't a lot of changes in the expenditures right now because, as JD said, Allison and JD are, are meeting with various departments on the expenditure side, but we did get some good information on revenues. Again, this is very early on, um, but we did get, um, receipts on nine out of our 18 major revenues this last week. And fortunately, the amounts came in, if you take a look at the actual to the COVID-19 budget, on those 19 revenue streams, they came in, in total, about $307,000 to the good, or up about 2.3%, and this is year-to-date, on those revenues. So we'll take whatever good news we get. Again, it's very early on and we're gonna be heading into some months here where I know revenues are gonna definitely be going down. So month by month, we'll continue to address this, but I do wanna highlight the good news, um, for this week, and I'm gonna stick with the main revenues that are highlighted in a bright yellow, if you can see those, bright highlighted in yellow for the month of May, the column for May. And the first one is, is our state sales tax. If we look on the individual month for May, we had thought on the COVID projection that potentially the revenue would come in at about $694,000. It came in at $881,000. The key thing to highlight with that, as you know, there is a three-month lag on sales tax, so it's actually February numbers. And we all know that the economy was doing very, very well in February. If you move along into the June and July numbers, you'll see that COVID number, um, the projections, we are anticipating those numbers dropping down in the $400,000 range going forward. But I'm really happy to report for May that that number came in higher than what we had anticipated. Year-to-date, the number for the sales tax is actually up $256,000 or 6.3% over what we had anticipated for COVID. If you go down to the home rule, you'll see also that the numbers are up. They are not up near to the degree that the state sales tax is, but we'll take it up whenever we can get it. It's up about 1.5% year-to-date for a total of just shy of $50,000 for our home rule sales tax. Again, going forward into the, to the June and July numbers, we anticipate those will most likely be dropping. The next two categories of income tax and the replacement tax, this is our corporate income tax, um, actually are slightly lower than where we had estimated the COVID-19 coming in. So Keith and I, um, tried to do some investigation on why in the world that that is down, because a lot of this is going back to the year 2019 on some of the income tax filings, both for individual and corporate. And what we were giving, um, the explanation for is that because the, the federal government did that 90-day extension for filing your returns, we are seeing some people, they're not paying their taxes due, um, they did not pay them in April, and hopefully we'll be seeing some, a little higher numbers coming in for June and July, yeah, June and July, which will hopefully even that out. And roughly those numbers year-to-date for income tax, they're down about 3.5% and about 4% on the corporate income tax. So again, I'm hoping that those come back in line with, with what we had estimated for the COVID-19. The utility taxes, um, this is another one, we are down year-to-date. We, we are, um, down also for the current month of May. We're down about 6% for the year. And as we've talked before, one of the reasons that this can be down is due to the climate. We had a very warm winter, so people weren't spending a lot of money on heat. And now it's been more cool this spring, so people may not have turned their air conditioners on yet, as well as some of the businesses that may have been closed and not using utilities like they normally do. So we'll continue to watch that. The next one is our local use tax. It's been pretty level.
Carol, I, I got a, I got a quick question. When you say we're down 6% on that, is that 6% from what you had budgeted or 6% down from what you, the presumed COVID amount that we would be collecting was?
The COVID. It's down the COVID amount.
So we're, we're down quite a bit more than that from what we budgeted?
Yes, yes, it's down even more.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure, cause it, it kinda sounded like we were only down 6% from what we had budgeted, but it's...
Oh, I'm so sorry if I...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mike.
No problem.
The next item that we received revenue on was our local use tax, and that number's been pretty flat. You can see for May, we got $108,000 in versus the 105 that we had projected for COVID. Overall, for the year, we're up about 5%, 5.6% or about $36,000. And the state had told us that they anticipate that that use tax should stay pretty level and strong throughout the next couple of months. So we're gonna keep our eye on that and hope that that comes to be. And Don, if you can flip to the next page, we've just got a couple more here that came in. Our biggest one here is our motor fuel tax. We were extremely pleased, if you take a look at the, the May receipts, we got $128,000 and we had actually budgeted only 40 for the COVID. Early on, when we talked to the comptroller's office, they had anticipated that there would virtually be no travel. People are truly not spending any money on gas, travel at all, and that doesn't appear to be the case. Um, so again, we're very, very pleased. For year-to-date, we're actually up $141,000 or 24% compared to where we thought we were gonna be for the COVID-19. So, we're gonna continue to monitor that. If we head into the summer and those numbers turn, you know, continue to be strong, that's one that we may come back to you and say, maybe we actually amend the budget up for that, for COVID-19. I don't know, but for now, we're leaving everything, everything the same. The last two I'll mention is the video gaming. We actually had anticipated that there might not be any video gaming here for the month of May, and we actually got in $18,000. So, um, that was a nice little up. Um, it's actually up 32 thou, uh, 32% for the entire year, so the money on the gaming is coming in. And then the last one is, is a small amount, but it's the cannabis. And originally, we hadn't hardly budgeted anything for, for cannabis, and it continues to, to come in. It's a little under where we had projected. We had projected 3,000 across the board. Um, so it, it's down a little bit here for the month of May, but it's up about 1.2% for the year. So anyways, we're real pleased right now for May that we're showing strong numbers. Again, we're, it's about $307,000 total on those nine revenues, but for now, we are, um, recommending that we hold tight with that $10 million, uh, recommended shortfall in our revenues. One last thing I wanted to talk about on the revenues, Keith and I, we also took a look at the water user fees and our sewer user fees, just to kinda see where they're coming in at. And for the four months ending April 30th, we virtually billed the same amount of usage for those four months as what we did in 2019. So the billing amount was the same for usage. It was about 0.4% off. It's virtually the same. However, we are showing that our outstanding accounts receivable on those counts is slower than what it was in 2019. And we know that that's probably due because they're not required to make payments, we aren't putting on penalties and delinquency charges, nor are we doing any turnoffs of the water. Right now, we're about $144,000 li, uh, stronger on the council's receivable, meaning we have a few more delinquent accounts. But I'm saying them as being slower payments because hopefully, once everything is listed, people will be coming in and will probably be setting up a lot of payment plans, and that money will start trickling back in. But I just wanted to alert you to that, that it appears that the money is, is coming in a little bit slower than what we had in, I shouldn't say what we had anticipated. We anticipated that there's definitely going to be some dragdown in our $10 million projections, so we're probably on course with the numbers that we budgeted. Any questions on the, go ahead, any questions on the revenues?
Alderman Wynn?
Uh, yeah, so, so down in, in the gray down here where it says, I think, uh, revised lost revenue and revised total lost revenue with adjustments, um, are those not affected by these, these updated changes we've got? Because those numbers are the exact same, uh, totals we had last week.
What this is, it's kind of a running total of change, but we have not amended the budget, and we would not do that until we actually asked council if you wanted to change those original projections. As we look towards the bottom, the original amount for lost revenue that we had calculated was $10,534,000. And then based on the first four months of actual, it's the very next line, we, we had some downs, and then we had the big up for April, the 365,000. The net change for those four months, since it was an up, was showing 329,000. Since we don't have May yet in total, we're not carrying that forward yet. We'll wait till we get all of May's numbers in. But for April, we were up 329,000, so the revised lost revenue just on, just on our paper, just for talking, is the $10,205. And then if we add in all of the remaining revenues and all, you know, all the other, um, smaller amounts, that brings the total, um, down. It's another 521,000 that was to the good in some of those funds. Um, so the revised lost revenue was 9.6, but we haven't revised anything. We're just kinda keeping a running total, and at some point, we'll come to you and, and ask if, if you wanna revise the numbers based on several months of history, if it, if it's showing that our, our number's a little bit different than where we had budgeted the COVID-19.
So, so this isn't a running total, like, uh, our total number down in the right-hand corner of the $10 million? That's not been, uh, adjusted at all with the, the new data you, you've been bringing in, um, yet?
It, it will, once we, once we close out the month of May and we have all the May numbers in, then we'll show a revised total, but we aren't going to update them in our, in our accounting software into Navoline until we would get a nod from council that we wanna officially amend it.
Okay.
And again, I'd kinda like to see several months of history going in the positive direction before I would consider that at this point. Any more, any more questions on the revenues? And if not, we can go to the next slide. We spent most of the week actually reconciling all the, um, spreadsheets that we had given you previously and making sure, there were so many people that were entering data into Navoline, we wanted to be sure that every little thing was tying out going forward now. And we did actually find some adjustments in our CIP, and the sheet that we gave you on the CIP a couple of weeks ago virtually has not changed. What happened is, we did not get all of the 5% contingencies that we had recommended to council, it didn't get updated in Navoline. So I just wanted to show, as we reconcile, both things were absolutely in sync. I just wanted to show you the change. In addition, um, we had a land purchase. It was five, the address was 520 21st Street. That actually went through and was finalized back in 2019, so I did remove that from the budget, and I wanted council to be aware of that, so that was changing the expenditures. So I've highlighted the net changes in expenditures now, it's $5,739,000. And I'm not gonna talk to this a whole lot, but it's the same sheets that we've been showing you. We have the total net changes and expenditures, Don, if you go to the next page. By category, and you'll see down in the far right-hand bottom, there's the new number, the $5,739, updated with those contingencies and that land purchase. And as we move across and we look at the one changes by fund, again, the bottom right number, $5,739, it's the next slide, Don. And then we'll go to the very last page of the fund equity. It's the very last slide, Don. And again, you'll see that the total, total ties out. So, again, I don't have any expenditure reductions to show you this week. Um, we will, hopefully here in the next two weeks, when JD and Allison... We will, hopefully here in the next two weeks, when JD and Allison get through meeting with all of the departments. One thing I did want to tell you, I don't know if you've got a pen and pencil, just to kind of write this down. Keith and I, we were looking at the general fund here later this afternoon. And we were just running the year-to-date numbers of the actuals. So through today, May nineteenth, if you divide May nineteenth, year-to-date, by the twelve months, so it's four point six one months, or it's about thirty-eight point four percent of the year and past, as of today. And again, expenditures don't come in just straight line all the way through the year. But just as a benchmark and a snapshot, just to kind of see, well, where are we at year-to-date? Now that we have reduced the budget, or we're looking at this COVID-19 budget. So we took the general fund, the new COVID-19 budget, and that's the one that is in the fund equity that we just talked about. We took at times the thirty-eight point four percent, which is through May nineteenth. And that total would be year-to-date expenditures, if it was a straight line expense, sixteen million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's the benchmark if we had spent it. However, we have only spent fifteen million, eight seventy-four. So we are to the good by two percent overall and about eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars year-to-date. And as you know, we just implemented this COVID-19, you know, starting the end of March, the first of April. So when council and the mayor, and when you gave direction to the department heads to hunker down, don't spend anything, hiring freeze, no overtime and all that, the departments truly are spending the bare minimum in their departments so far year-to-date. Again, that number can change as we go throughout some of the months. But I just wanted to show you in a snapshot that it is good news. And I'm going to plan to update you with those year-to-date actuals on a monthly basis. So we're absolutely monitoring this going forward, expenditures and revenues. And then I also am thinking that after I have an opportunity to review this with our new interim city administrator, we may come back and recommend to council to go ahead and amend the budget at this point. To lock in the COVID-19 numbers, so that it will be easier going forward for the departments to monitor their budgets. Again, I anticipate we could amend the budget probably four or five more times throughout this year. But at least if we lock down where we are so far, and then as, as we continue to find cuts, then we will continue to accumulate it, and at some point, you know, we'll continue to amend the budget. But it would make it easy, a lot easier on the department heads to monitor their budget, so. But, uh, once I talk to the new city administrator, um, we will come back with a recommendation on that. And that's all I had for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
JD, do you have anything you want to share before we open it up to questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Carol, thank you for that presentation. Uh, council, do you have any questions or comments, concerns? All right, well, thank you very much, Carol and JD, thank you for your, all of your team's work on this.
Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll hear the next update at the next meeting, right? Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Um, that is it for our informationless this evening. I'd now like to open it up for public comments. Janine, do we have any public comment this evening?
We did not.
Okay, I do not believe we have anyone in the chambers, so we have no public comment this evening. Without any further business of the committee of the whole, I'd like to close out the committee of the whole and go into the council agenda. And will we be having an invocation, Alderman Berg? I don't know if you have her muted or she's muted. Alderman Berg? We'll assume there's no invocation this evening unless she speaks up.
She's not muted.
Alderman Berg? We're calling the council meeting to order, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Berg? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Skoomaker?
Present.
Waldron? Berg?
How do you want to phrase it?
What?
Alderman Berg, are you present? We'll move forward.
Okay. Your honor, I request approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of May twelfth, two thousand and twenty, and the appointment made during committee of the whole on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. And would you adjust our roll call to Alderman Berg?
Yes, I will do that, thank you.
We got your vote on that one, Alderman Berg.
Okay, that's all I have this evening, your honor.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Um, so now we're in for council business. And I'm going to go around the council room and see if anyone has any business they'd like the council to address. Alderman Williams?
None.
Alderman Parker?
I do. JD, I want to thank you for everything you've done over the last several months, helping us, you know, get through our daily business. I don't think you really signed up for all of this. But, um, you know, with Marty coming on board here soon, I know you're going to be working with him closely. And I know that your people are going to be really excited to get you back into, you know, where you're really comfortable. But, but thanks for picking up the slack and taking the ball and, and helping us carry it even further towards the goal line. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Went?
Uh, ditto, you just stole what I was going to talk about. Thanks, JD.
Thank, thank you.
Alderman Potter?
Uh, JD, I hope you'd never come back to being city administrator for your sake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moyer?
Yeah, I echo the thank you as well. But, um, so I was contacted, and I know Alderman Skoomaker was contacted as well by the owner of Suzy Slots on Forty-first Street and Twenty-third Avenue. And I just, I wanted to bring it up. He is, um, looking at purchasing the Christopher D's, uh, business on Sixteenth Street. And has asked, um, has requested that he would close down his Suzy Slots location on Forty-first Street and the Avenue of Cities. If he could transfer that to the Christopher D's location. Christopher D's does currently not have a license. This doesn't alter the number of licenses that we would currently have, but I wanted to bring it up. I'm not sure, uh, exactly if, if, if we want to make a motion today, his lease wouldn't be up until November. But that's what he's going to be asking us to do.
So Alderman Went, do you have a comment?
Is the idea that he would move a K license down there? Or that it would still be a, a bar like Christopher D's and?
He would trade off his, he would trade off his K license for the lower license, if we would allow it. And he, he actually has this, did he talk to you, Alderman Moyer, about a second possibility as well?
The, the other, the other one that's in the old Kings Plaza, I believe, he wanted to, uh, he said he would bring that up later. So he'd like to move.
He would prob, possibly trade off some K licenses and put them in places that are more in line with what the council, you know, generally believes. But that they belong in. Uh, but Dirk, wasn't there an obstacle that, that's not allowed, like beyond our approval, even beyond our approval?
So, yeah, the, neither the state nor Moline's code ordinances permits a transfer from one address to another. I walked through this with, uh, with you and Aron Moyer. If Christopher D's had a license and he bought Christopher D's, he's allowed to use that license until he gets approval from the state for that one. And so you would have actually subtracted one license from your, your total volume. But Christopher D's doesn't have any licenses. So, um, we can surmount the state one. If you were willing to have him surrender a K in exchange for the tavern license and allow him to apply to the state, you, we'd have to take an exception to the existing ordinance on the books that says no new ordinances, or no new licenses, I'm sorry. This is technically a new license. But you're surrendering one, you're not increasing the number, um, you're also not shrinking it, but you are getting rid of a K. And I know that the K's have been a particular source of heartburn for many on the council.
Can we make an adjustment in the ordinance that, because I wouldn't want to go down that path of being able to move licenses?
Right.
But could we make something very specific in the ordinance? Would only allow us to, from our perspective, um, transfer a license to a more favorable license?
Well, I would encourage you to be the most specific possible, for the exception, which would be the surrender of a K to move into, um, um, different liquor license establishment. And that way, it's the K's only, if he wanted to do this a couple other places. I think that what I'm hearing is that that's a benefit to the council. Fewer K's, if these things are in actual establishments, so much the better. Then that would be the precedent, and I think you could live with that, getting rid of the K's and letting them be where there are actually bars now.
What's the restriction on K's right now?
Well, it's a total restriction, that you're only going to have thirty licenses and you have, you're at thirty-eight, I believe, right now, thirty's.
So we don't have a sub-restriction on the K's?
We do, it's five, and we're currently at eight.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Parker?
So, in this situation, we're talking about him surrendering his K? And then, um, we would just open up the bar license, is that correct?
Well, he would, he would qualify for the tavern license. And then he would get a new gaming license from us in exchange for surrendering the K. So you're not, you're decreasing the K's, but you're not creating, decreasing the total number of new licenses. You're still above your thirty limit.
Right. But don't we have people on a waiting list that, for bar licenses? I mean, that's not going to get us in trouble by pushing him to the front of the line, is it?
I don't know about a waiting list.
There's currently no waiting list, but what?
Oh.
One is, because we didn't start a waiting list at the very beginning, in fairness, we said it would be like we do our election process, where we would allow them to come in and, um, you know, what do we call that? A lottery system, it would be like a lottery system.
So I think Alderman Parker, what, we're not really moving them back in the line? They'd still be in the same spot in the line. This, this would just allow for a provision for a license to be transferred to a more attractive status from our perspective.
I like the, I love the idea of transferring it from a K to a bar license, whatever that's called. I just want to be sure that we do it correctly and don't get ourselves in trouble. And have to open it wide open to everybody else again.
Alderman Skoomaker?
I, I'm in favor of this. Dirk, are there any unintended consequences? We, like, like, could he turn around and say, take that second K and sell it for a very large amount of money? Because he can then, he can't, can't he? There's no.
There's no sale, no transfer, no.
Yeah, okay.
He can buy a license, though, because that's basically what he's doing.
Yes, but then he has to go back downstate and, and apply there, uh, and.
Well, I mean, he's buying out a K. He's making a K go away to give him the freedom of putting, uh, a, a different license in a liquor establishment.
Right.
That's, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, he's, he's buying to get rid of it, yeah. I would say, I'd say it's a win for the community. So should we, let's, I think that it'd be appropriate to make a motion to direct staff to amend the ordinance to do this properly.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, direct staff to.
Do this properly.
There you go.
Second, Alderman Skoomaker.
All right, we have a motion from Alderman Moyer and a second from Alderman Skoomaker. Is there any discussion on this? I don't see any hands, so, um, roll call, please.
And that was a real motion. Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Do you have anything else this evening, Alderman Moyer?
No, just thanks for helping work that all out this week.
Thank you, thank you for bringing it to the council's attention. Alderman Skoomaker?
Uh, just JD, thank you and echo the, the other comments of the council, well done.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Waldron?
Nothing.
Alderman Berg?
I have nothing except for, ditto what everyone else said about JD. JD, thanks a, a lot.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, and I want to, I want to say the same. Thank you so much for JD, for everything that you've done, JD. I know it's been not only a, a difficult thing to do, but in a very difficult time, so thank you very much. And I also want to thank all of the team members that backfilled your role. We know what you do, and we know how difficult that is to pick up that slack as well. So please pass on our gratitude to everybody else that, that adjusted and morphed their positions to help us out.
Yeah, that means a lot, and, and they did, so I'll pass that on, thank you.
How many people are impacted? Is it like twelve?
Oh, yeah.
Twelve? Go back to your places, fantastic. Thank you. And then I did want to give the council an update. We had the Forward Platform, uh, got launched officially on Thursday. And I don't know if Jeff Manis is on the call, but he has received fantastic feedback. And he has done a wonderful job of navigating all that and making sure that the feedback that comes from the businesses is going to the, the software developer. And it is, there's lots of evolution to the platform right now, but it, the feedback has been very, very good. They're, um, using it and finding benefit from it. So I just wanted to share that with the council. Um, and then we're just super excited to have Marty on board. And thank you very much for joining us this evening, Marty, and, and being open to coming to Moline. We're, we're so pleased to have you. I don't have anything else, I'd like to now open it up to staff. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share with the council this evening? Hearing none, and now I'd like to open it up for a public comment. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. I believe there is no further business for the city council this evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Skoomaker.
We have a motion from Alderman Skoomaker and a second from Alderman Moyer. He's positioning himself, doesn't he have to say? Without any further business, we are adjourned.